Welcome to the Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting for Ames Community College. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. First up, I'll ask for approval of the agenda. We'll need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Jean, is there some? Thanks, Heidi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a rather lengthy consent agenda. I will list all of the items for noting. Under 4A, minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 District Special Board Meeting. B, minutes of the September 10th, 2025 District Board Meeting. C, revised policy 513, volunteers and interns. D, revised policy 517, Ames Staff Association. E, repeal policy 3-715, violence and weapons on the campus. F, repeal policy 3-725, tobacco-free. G, repeal policy 4-900, resignation, suspension, and termination of administrators and staff. H, repeal policy 4-1525, employee tuition waiver and reimbursement. If there's any questions, if not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second up? Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay, public comment. I'll double check. No public comment today. Thanks, Zach. First up, we have presentation from our guests and representatives. We have Shannon McCaslin, our Dean of Students, with student Delaney Franz.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. And I will say, we say student, but as of yesterday, Delaney is about to become alumni. She just finished. I didn't know she was gonna be done. She just told me, and her fingers will tell you also, her fingernails, that she is straight here from work. She just came from work. This wonderful student works at Truck City, and so I say to you, thank your boss for letting you come for a few minutes to visit with us. Delaney's been on quite the educational journey. I asked the automotive faculty for some great ideas on students, and you're gonna see why Delaney came our way. She started as a concurrent student here at the college from 2016 to 2020. Sorry about that 2020 thing. Earning her Associate of Science degree, summa cum laude. At the same time, she graduated valedictorian from high school. And of course, this December, she'll graduate again and cross our stage with High Honors, 11 Certificates, and an Associate of Applied Science in Automotive Technology. But that's not all. She has two more degrees I'm begging her to tell you about, what she did in the time from 2020 to coming back here for autos, auto service. So let's give it up for Delaney Franz.
Thank you, guys. So as Shannon said, I'm Delaney. I started at Ames in 2016. So I was 14, freshman in high school. I was very blessed to be able to attend Windsor Charter Academy where I was a concurrent enrollment student. I actually took more Ames classes than I did high school classes, which was kind of cool. But yeah, I was able to graduate high school with my Associates of Science. And when I graduated high school, I initially wanted to go into neuroscience and maybe become a neurosurgeon. So I started out at UNC as a pre-med biology major. And after two semesters, I did really love the subject matter, but it just wasn't for me. I just, for some reason, knew I wasn't where I was meant to be. So I decided to take a break from traditional four-year university and ended up going to Western Governors University online to do, apply my Associate's degree towards my Bachelor of Business Administration. And so that program was really cool because I was able to work through it at my own pace. I was able to work full-time and go to school and kind of do it whenever I wanted to. So I really enjoyed that and decided, well, might as well do my MBA too then. So I did do that, and I really enjoyed that. And I decided to apply that education towards helping a real estate company build their human resource management strategy. So I helped them essentially design this program that would help incentivize employees to stay and really invest in the company. They also had me hand illustrate their guidebook for this program to increase employee buy-in. And so that was a really cool experience. I really enjoyed being able to interview with the executives of this company and learn a lot about their HR strategies that they already had in place. But again, I just felt like it wasn't where I was supposed to be. And so all the while I was going through this education and these different career paths. I had been restoring a 1968 Ford F-100, just kind of as a hobby. But the more I learned about it, the more I got into it, I was like, I think I need to give this a real shot. So I had a really great experience at Ames in high school. I was like, you know, I've heard great things about the automotive program too, so I'll give it a shot. And I started that in January of 2023. So just finished the program last night, as she was just telling you. So it's kind of funny, bittersweet timing, but I've really enjoyed the program. I started out knowing pretty much next to nothing about automotive at all. And so I got my first job in a shop two weeks into my first semester. So I've been full-time in the industry during the day and going to night class since. And I think I can speak for everybody in that program that does the night classes that it is a physical and mental challenge like nothing I've experienced, working like nine, 10-hour days at a physical job and then doing it again for another four hours at school. But I would say that Ames is just, it's the kind of environment that we want to be at. We're willing to spend another four, four and a half hours of our day to come and learn. We really enjoy the instructors. It's, the tuition makes it worth it. It's very affordable, very accessible for us. And so I've definitely grown a lot, both as a person and in my automotive knowledge coming to Ames that I don't think I would have had otherwise if I would have just gone into the industry. And so because of the education I've gotten here, I've actually been able to go complete four of my ASEs so far. Hopefully, I'll continue doing that now that I have a little bit more time. And yeah, I just want to thank you guys for the work you put into this. It really is, it's a great place for anybody to go, whatever program they're in. And the night classes really help out a lot for the people who are dependent on their full-time jobs. And just the experiences we have here, the memories we make, the instructors are all great. It's been really great. So yeah, just want to say thank you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come tell you my story and creating a great place for us all to learn.
She didn't tell you that what she wanted to do with her automotive and her MBA. Tell them what you want to do with that together.
Um, eventually.
Come to you. Tell us what you're doing.
Eventually, I would like to start a shop, hopefully more of the restoration modification type shop, not so much just repair. But yeah, I don't know. Right now, I'm in a repair shop. I'm over at Truck City, and I do really love it. It's a lot of fun. I learn something new every day. It's a new challenge every single day, and it's a lot of fun. But I think getting into the personalized side of customization and being able to build these beautiful classics for people who, a lot of those people, those are their lives. So I think that'd be really cool. I think both Ames and my education I had prior will give me the tools I need to do that eventually. So yeah. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Delaney, on behalf of Ames and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I just have to say that this is why Ames exists. It's because of students and now alumni like you, and I think that you're gonna do incredible things. And can we give her another round of applause, please?
Yeah.
Can you imagine doing all that by that time? Wow, pretty amazing. Thank you. Okay, make sure I didn't jump too far ahead here. Up next, we have our representatives to the board. And first up, we have Patrice Bergstaller, our Ames Faculty Association.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Nice to be here. So I get to brag about the faculty accomplishments, and there were quite a few over the summer and into the fall here in September, August, September. Our faculty has been very active. And so first of all, our faculty members attended conferences. The English Department, under the, with the senior adjunct faculty, Kendra Griffin, she took a group to the Writers Quilt Conference in Utah and then to the Pike's Peak Writers Conference in Colorado Springs. And then the Physics Department, Dr. Fana Mulu-Moore, Associate Professor of Physics, went to Washington DC, and she was at a conference there for Organization of Physics for a two-year college tandem conference. So and then our Music Department, which I am part of and very proud of, our piano professor, our new piano, full-time piano professor, she was an adjunct. She just moved up into the full position. She performed at the University of Denver Lamont School of Music with clarinet professors from UNC and members of the US Air Force Academy Band and collaborative pianists across Colorado and Wyoming. So she was there for the Colorado Clarinet Day. So then, then we had faculty members that conducted worldwide activities. And from the Humanities, Philosophy, and World Language Department, Gloria Munson, who's the Spanish instructor, went to Panama and presented there at the 107th Annual Conference of the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. And then we had someone from the Visual and Performing Arts. And I wanted to kind of highlight this because it's kind of interesting. The full-time Visual Arts Professor, Sonia Paukun, went to China. And I'm not gonna try to pronounce the name of the city she went to. But she was a resident artist for nine weeks this summer. And then she had a ceramic expedition that's staying there a long, long time in the capital of porcelain capital of the world. And she gave, and her theme was food for thought. And it was part of her sabbatical that she did. It was an intersection of culture, biology, and nourishment, which I thought was interesting. And then I just wanted to add something that I don't even have here on my notes. But there's a professor in business and technology, Jennifer Markowitz. And she has started a new study abroad program as of last year. And it's been in the works for a couple of years, but they actually had different faculty. Not audition, that would be what I do when I sing. But they presented themselves to be able to go to Ireland. And it's between this 2026, and it's between the spring semester and the fall, summer semester. They go for two weeks. And next year, they're planning to go to Japan. I thought that was really cool. So and then the awards, in awards and community involvement, we had a professor of welding technology, Cody Jones, who got a Educator of the World Year, Educator of the Year for American Welding Society 2025. And then April McClure, she's Professor of Speech Communications. She got the Outstanding Alumni for 2025 from Adams State University. And last but not least, in Political Science, Kay Trent Howard, Professor of Political Science, was named the Chair of Greeley's Housing for All Committee. And their focus is on affordable housing, economic growth, and population growth. Thank you. Any questions? Nope.
Yes, thank you for your report. Next up, we have Paul Bashlein with our Ames Staff Association report.
Good afternoon, Chair Schuck, President of the Board of Trustees, wannabe, Dr. Rothmer, and members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share an update from the Ames Staff Association. Our theme, of course, this year is connecting our voices, continues to guide the work that we do to bring staff together, strengthening relationships across campuses, and highlight the incredible contributions of our colleagues. This fall, we are excited to be planning a community outreach project in partnership with the Well County Food Bank. This effort will give staff a chance to come together in service and extend Ames' culture of care into the wider community. Along with this, our monthly staff meetings remain a strong point of connection, featuring guest speakers who provide valuable insight, encourage collaboration, and help us build a stronger sense of belonging across Ames. And as we look forward to the holidays, we are planning this year the first annual ASA, annual Halloween costume contest, the week of October 27th. So please look in the daily for more information because it's, well, I'm not even gonna do this joke, so it's pretty bad. So skipping down. I also want to highlight some of the exceptional people who embody the mission and the values of Ames. Ginny Moore has been recognized for her remarkable talent and professionalism. Whitney Cowling is celebrated for her unwavering dedication to student success, specifically for her involvement in planning the Fall-In, where she puts students first. And the entire records and registration team is being honored for their professionalism and their deep commitment to Ames' mission and core values. These spotlight remind us of the extraordinary people who make Ames such a special place to work and learn. And that is my report. So do you have any questions?
Any questions for Paul? No, thank you. And next up, we have Jeff Thatch, who will be on Zoom, providing us with the Student Government Association.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the Board, Chair Schuck, Dr. Rothmer, faculty, staff, and my fellow students. I don't have a whole lot to share this month, but I do want to highlight a few things that have been happening around student life. Our campus activities, programming events, and our Arties Recovery Connection get-togethers have been well-attended. These events continue to give students a space to connect, recharge, and learn about the support systems here at Ames. Our next big event is coming up on October 27th. It's the trick-or-treat track and the perk from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Various clubs, departments, and organizations from across campus will be handing out free candy to Ames students, employees, and their families. It's a really fun event. If you guys haven't ever been, highly suggest you check it out. It's just a family-friendly way to bring the community together and celebrate the season. I do want to highlight one event that came together very last, very last minute, and it was called Unity is Our Middle Name. The idea was to remind students that everyone's voice matters and that respect for others is what holds our community together. At the event, students were invited to sign the Unity and Dignity Pledge, which reads, "At Ames Community College, unity is at our core. I pledge to honor the dignity of every person, to listen with respect, and to strengthen our community by embracing diversity, compassion, and collaboration. Together we rise as one aardvark community." And after students signed them, we posted them on a giant aardvark cutout, and we displayed that in the student comments as a reminder that we're all a part of the same community. We also asked students to write what unity meant to them, and some of the words they shared were kindness, connection, empathy, and friendship. These are all things that I truly believe people can find here at Ames. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Any questions, comments? None here. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks for making sure you could join us today. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Next up would be action items, and we do not have action items this month. So for Agenda Item 8, informational items. Jerry Harvey will walk us through our event calendar and upcoming work session and agenda items.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schuck. So you'll find there in your packet the calendar of upcoming events for you all to take a look at with the up-to-date attendance from the board listed there. I won't go through all of them, but I will highlight one at the very bottom. December 12th is commencement, so for those trustees who'll be continuing on after the swearing-in on the 10th, please mark that on your calendars. I do have an update. It says TBD there for the time, but the ceremony will be at 3:00. That has been updated since this was published. So please be there in the green room by 2:00 that afternoon. That way, we can get you all settled and then ready to head out onto the stage. And more of the Welcome Week activities are still coming in. So as they come in, I'll add those to your weekly emails as well for the Celebration Week activities. So let's see here. Next is Monthly Agenda Items and Reports. So you'll see there for November, it will be a pretty busy meeting. A big one will be Chuck's presentation during the work session for budget assumptions, giving you a look ahead to next year's budget and action on what I'll be talking about next. So the board meeting and retreat dates for action, along with a number of other reports. So if you would like, I can move on to the next item.
As I said, do you want to just keep moving through? You want me to introduce you?
No, I can, I can keep moving through if you want, if that's easier.
This will be all of Section 8. It's a Jerry show.
Yes. So the next item is Board of Trustees Meeting and Retreat Dates for 2026. So you'll see there in your packet a draft proposed calendar of meeting dates and times. The proposed meeting time change is based on the August board meeting discussion that the board had about changing upcoming board meeting times. So that is factored in here. But really, the main point of this item for today is for you all to discuss how you feel about that proposed change time and the proposed dates here. Keeping consistent with past years, all of the dates listed are the second Wednesday of the month, so keeping that consistent, except those listed with an asterisk. So the only one there really is May. The May board meeting, we always move to the first to keep it out of the way of Celebration Week and commencement. But all of the rest of them, it works on the calendar to have them on the second Wednesday of the month. You'll note there proposed board retreat dates for January. That is the second Wednesday of that month, again, just to keep it consistent. And the June retreat, summer retreat, is usually a two-day. So I have the Tuesday and Wednesday of that second week of June listed there. But I would certainly like, between now and the November board meeting where this will be approved, for all of you to please take a look at your calendars and just confirm that these dates will work for you. I will also be sending out this draft to the two new trustees as well, who are not part of the board yet, but certainly will be impacted by this. So I will be sending that out to them as well, just so they're aware of potential dates that are coming up too. But any questions, comments, or anything about the proposal?
Ms. Wendy. I think the dates look fine. When we had discussed about making it at different times, it was to make sure that Chris could attend, that he's no longer gonna be with us after December, which I'm upset about, but that's okay. I like it the way it is. And I know Dr. Bornstein had one time said it's nice to have it at the same time. More people can attend, and they seem to attend. I don't like driving. I'm one of those people on Highway 60 with all the trucks, single lane, you know, suicide lanes at nighttime. So I'd like to put it back to about the same time as we've been doing it, if that's possible.
Yeah, absolutely. If the board.
Which would be 1:30 start for the board meeting, and then we would adjust as usual for the work session previous, prior to that.
Correct. Yep, yeah, we can keep the same schedule that we have been where, yeah, work sessions start, depending on how many items there are, you know, around 11:00, there's a lunch break, and then the 1:30 meetings, like we've done. We can certainly do that.
I would prefer that.
Sure.
So.
Yeah.
We have Trustee Tresswell, who wasn't able to be here today, that want to double check with just on, as we've kind of talked about making changes. I'm fine with that if we go down that road. I'm sorry, but I guess I don't need to have you, either one of you kind of pipe in that. So if we could check with new folks this next month as well.
Absolutely. Yep, I will follow up with Trustee Tresswell, of course. I'll let her know what the discussion was today. And at the same time, I'll reach out to the two new folks as well, just to give them a heads up and confirm that that will work for them too.
Perfect. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Yes, one last touch base. Item 8C is just a touch base for those who will be attending the ACCT Conference in a couple of weeks. Just to let you both know, Trustee Wendell and Trustee Schuck, it will be in New Orleans. Thank you both for already scheduling those flights to get there. And just a heads up on some of the activities outside of the conference itself. We will have a group dinner on the first evening. So after the kickoff session at 5:00 PM, I have a reservation made for a group dinner. And I'll send this detailed out to you in your weekly email as well, but I wanted to touch on it today. Ames was also invited to attend a dinner on Thursday hosted by one of the, one of the host groups that is there. So I have information about that that'll come out to you as well for Thursday evening. And I know Dr. Bornstein is on a panel on Friday morning. I didn't have the specifics yet on dates or times on that Friday morning, but she'll be presenting on a very cool subject. So we might want to go and support her on that that morning. But again, all that information I'll send out in your weekly emails this week, too.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else, Jerry? Okay, great. Thank you. With Dr. Bornstein's absence today, Dr. Russ Rothmer will be walking us through the CEO/President Report. So Dr. Rothmer, our Executive Vice President.
Thank you, Chair Schuck. I'd like to start the CEO/President's Report by introducing Dr. Ailer, our Vice President of Academic Affairs, who will share information on the academic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Rothmer. Chair Schuck, Board members, Cabinet, guests, pleased to present the Academic Plan 2526 Plan for the coming year. Okay, so I'll start out with what is the purpose of Academic Affairs? And what do we seek to become in service to Ames and our students and community? And you can see the bullets on the slide there. These relate to several things in the strategic plan. So we have a pathways initiative where we're trying to help students understand what courses to take and what sequences for all of the different programs that we offer. We're working on ensuring that the curriculum meets the workforce needs. We're working on innovative credentials. We're linking the curriculum to student success to maximize students' ability to be successful in their goals. Looking at innovative and instructional modes, transforming instructional spaces to make them more efficient, more effective for modern learners. And then we're also working, we have a large initiative going on right now to improve accessibility of all digital everything so that students can access those. On this slide, these link to leveraging our internal and workforce data that is available to us. And some of the strategic initiatives related to this are keeping costs down, so prior learning assessments, apprenticeships, those sorts of things. And then we're also exploring work-based learning to help meet some of these purposes. In the areas of continuous improvement, we regularly. We, we regularly give reports on our program review process and, and results coming from that activity. We've, we've started putting together some. Right now it's, it's internal data, but it'll be coming in our data systems that we're working with Campus Works to build. We have in this week's enrollment report, 9,090 students enrolled this fall. About 40% of those are concurrent high school off campus. About a third of them are online and about 28% are on campus in our classrooms. And that's roughly. Little over 3,000 seats that are being enrolled in by those students. We did an estimate of what could we, what could we do with capacity that we have open right now? And so we could add about another 1,100 enrollments. And then if we do some expanding that we'd like to do, we can add a few hundred beyond that. So that is what we're trying to do with continuous improvements to make sure. We are filling our classes, offering them at the right times to the right people. Now that's part of the program review. Then we're also, another initiative related to that is to reduce the number of Ds, Fs and withdrawals. So that students who are in the classes are being successful in making progress toward, again, toward their goals. This priority, environmental scanning and analysis. We are working with Campus Works. They're developing several products to help us get into our data and look at it and understand it and use it to help make decisions. And that is related again to reducing these Fs and withdrawals. And then we're also trying to optimize how data is collected and disseminated so that people at all levels. Of academic affairs can access data relevant to their activities. So that they can maximize their planning and implementation. We're also looking, another priority of the plan is to look at programming at various locations. And we have been discussing about a dozen possible programs at Fort Lupton. Program enhancements or new programs. And so we'll be prioritizing those and bringing those forward here in the next few months. We're looking at about five programs here in Windsor, about eight in Greeley. And then we're looking for additional offerings that we could consider for the Loveland campus in that area. And so as those are prioritized, we'll be bringing those forward. Some of those as new certificates and degrees, some for facilities or other things such as that. We're also looking at enhancing our planning through timelines. So we're looking. Of course, we have the current three-year strategic plan. We're in year two of that. And so we're aligning our activities to make sure that we can stay on track for completing those initiatives. But then with the second bullet here, we're, we've also begun looking at all of the equipment that we have across the college. And estimating when do we think it will need to be replaced? Either because it has a lifespan and it's going to wear out. Or we anticipate there'll be new technology that we'll want to choose to replace it so that students. Are receiving training on the newest equipment. We're trying to look forward on capital projects that we might want to do, personnel, do enrollment projections. Operational costs, program costs and working with the finance area to. Project those things out so that we can figure out what we should be doing when and if we need to tweak some timelines. So that things work together. We also have, excuse me, in academic affairs, the, a group called the Learning Council, which is advisory to me. And we have several subgroups that have been working for the last couple of years. The Curricular Assessment Committee, the Digital Learning Committee used to be the Online Excellence Committee, but now it's. We've broadened the scope of that and renamed it. The Learn Committee, which recommends software and things for faculty to adopt. We've been trying to stay up on artificial intelligence. It changes so quickly. That's difficult to keep ahead of. And then of course, working with the High School Programs Team. To make sure we're serving our concurrent enrollment students in the best way that we can. The, yeah, the last section of the academic plan is the priority of exploring what future-ready means. And we've begun working some with the Institute for the Future in California. And they've helped us identify some areas to look at, to think about what does it mean to be future-ready? How do we bring that to Ames and make sure that we're serving the. Future upcoming needs of the community and of students who will come to us. And so these are some of the things related to that. I want to particularly point out the blurring of credit and non-credit. This is an idea that we've been beginning to have more focused conversations around to say, what do employers and students really want? Are they interested in credentials? Are they interested in skills? We offer things, some of it is for credit, some of it's non-credit, some of it you can get either way. And so we're beginning to say, how do we structure our offerings to make sure we're delivering what people want? And not worry so much about strictly whether it's credit or non-credit. Last bullet, then also I mentioned, we've been working with Tashi, who at the Institute for the Future. He came and visited for a couple of days, a few months ago. And he had a tour of campuses and programs. And was very impressed with the amount of experiential learning that we provided Ames, which is hands-on. You know, doing, doing things, not just lectures and books, but experiences. And it actually was a lot more than we even knew. So we're, we're, I've asked my team to begin putting together a catalog of experiential learning because. We need to understand what other people in other units are doing and share that with each other. And celebrate that because that's a very powerful instructional modality. And as Tashi said, he thinks we're a leader nationally in experiential learning. So we want to make sure we capitalize on that and expand on it and emphasize that for our students. Thank you for the opportunity to present the academic plan. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Ailer, for your presentation. You spoke to the, the opportunity for capacity and increased enrollment. And you talked about having about 1,100 additional spaces. Is that, it's a two-part question. So the first part is like, is that in person or is that online or is it a mix of both? And then the second part is around like capacity and then like a want from community. So like. Do, do those programs have additional enrollment, like wanted from, from community? Or is it just, we've, we've, we've assessed that this is kind of the capacity that we have in these programs?
Okay, this, this is talking about in-person, in-class seats that are available. It's not an exact number, but it, we're starting to try to put together some estimates. Generally, there's a desire to expand offerings and to recruit more students. We're also working on initiative with marketing and communication linked through the program review process. To identify where do we have capacity? Where do we have wait lists? Where, there's a lot of programs that want to expand, but it's really not viable to expand them. So we're trying to figure out where do we need to direct marketing resources? For example, I've, we've said several times, Welding has 180 students on a waitlist. It would not make sense to do a heavy marketing campaign to put people on a waitlist that they have to wait three years to get into the program. So, so some of what we're doing with trying to collect this is to find out where do we have existing capacity? And how do we interface with our. Excuse me, with our marketing efforts to appropriately target the advertising and marketing funds. Where we can take those students in. And then if we don't have current capacity, but it's a high need area or a high demand area. Can we increase capacity in some of those programs?
Any other questions? Go ahead.
My second question is around the drop, fill, withdraw. I guess like programming, I guess are opportunities that you, that you spoke of. Recently I saw that Ames was highlighting itself as, you know, Hispanic serving institution. I also know that Ames is a first gen forward institution. And so how are you engaging faculty and I guess academic support staff? In, I guess, servingness or first gen servingness so that they can better support students from those identified populations to, to be more successful?
I'll, I'll take a shot. If I don't quite hit your question, give me a follow-up again. We're working in some programs to provide specific support for Hispanic speaking population. One of the big successes is in our commercial driver license certificate. We are. The instruction in that, some of it has to be in English because there's an exam that you have to pass at the end of it. And you have to be able to talk to police if they, if you get pulled over or if you stop at a truck stop or something. But we have integrated language support and that program is available mostly in Spanish. Or in English. And so we're trying to serve that specific population that way. We're doing a similar thing, working on some programming in education, in early childhood education. There are Hispanic populations in the Greeley area that are like teachers aides. And they want to move up and, and develop their credentials. And so we're developing some coursework and opportunities to do that. And so some of it is providing. Providing experiences in Spanish where appropriate or starting in Spanish and evolving into English. We also have a pretty robust English language learning program. It used to be called English as a second language, but now it's ELL. And so we're doing programming in that. We're trying to find when we can faculty who are bilingual. We're trying to find bilingual tutors and to put people in class as embedded tutors to help. All students actually increase their success.
Thank you for those pieces. And I think that you were getting more to what I was asking towards the end there with the embedded tutors. So there's knowledge around, you know, first gen students maybe not having the navigational insights or resources. That students who aren't first gen have. And so, you know, are there specific academic supports or trainings for styles of teaching or things like that? That, that Ames is implementing in order to support first gen students? Thank you for the language piece as well, but I mean, just for like students in general to find success. And specifically in serving those, I guess, targeted populations based on those, I guess, either federal or state designations.
Okay. Some of that falls into student affairs and, and at some point, I'm sure. Larry will, in, in one of his presentations, talk about all the programming that they have available. But we have, we've made changes to our advising system. We have, are we this year expanding the trio? Type offerings or is that upcoming in the future?
Of all-in programs and services. So under her umbrella, we have not only the two trias student support services grants the college has. But then we also have what we call all-in programs. And that's essentially kind of the colleges take on migrant services, former camp grant type materials. Very active in both Fort Lupton and Greeley. And then lastly would be a lot of our kind of institutional-based efforts to sort of serve these populations you're asking about. So certainly the first gen forward work Bernie's team leads, our Hispanic Serving Institute. Status and particularly pursuit of the Seal of Excellencia from Excellency in Education. Bernie and I just were in DC last week at their annual meeting. And then the last little piece there, just looking at continuing to kind of expand the ways across our portfolio and student affairs that we can support those students. You know, I, I think one of the things that I always take away is that really we have kind of an economic imperative to serve those populations. First gen students are half of who we have here. Another 33%, 35% are Hispanic or Latin A students. And so we're constantly looking at ways that through a new advising model, through the wraparound services that we offer, all those kinds of things that. We're engaging with those students outside of the classroom and providing supports to help them navigate what can be a confusing environment in college. And I, I think that within our leadership team and student affairs and on down the org chart. A number of them, myself included, are also first gen students. And so we come at it from a lens of. Really trying to make things easier than it was for us and engaging students in different ways. That answer your question.
So, so my question is how are you engaging faculty in that work?
Let, let me come back to that. Thank you, Larry. The, the student, student affairs deals more directly with students and assisting them with issues that they're facing. For the faculty, we have the Faculty Teaching and Learning Center, and they provide a broad range of training. And enhancing instructional style and instructional effectiveness and teaching. You know, we have so many students who are concurrent enrollment students, teaching younger students is different than teaching traditional college age. So we're, we're developing programming for a lot of different types of scenarios. And, and much of that is also recorded so that if faculty can't attend in person. They can pick that training up at their convenience.
Dr. Ailer, just a quick question on our flight training or pilot training programs. How close are we to capacity? And where does that stand? Can we expand that program?
We, yeah, we are pretty close to capacity with the, the fleet size that we have right now. In our plans, we're looking at possibly adding two more planes for doing the training over the next few years. And so as we're, we're back, we try to keep that balance of how many, how many flight hours are available? How many students do we have? There's a lot of reasons. I, I used to take flying lessons and I know that. I would get up in the morning if I was scheduled for a lesson and I'd have to look at. How windy is it? What direction is the wind from? And how much sky cover, cloud cover is there? And how am I feeling today? And any of those could knock you out and say, no, you're not flying today. So there's a lot of variables that come into play on that, but that is something that the aviation department really tries to manage very well. One of the changes that we made, we've moved our airplane maintenance to be in-house. And so now we have, I just saw the numbers the other day, but we have almost double, I think it is, the number of flight hours. Because we can turn the maintenance around more quickly, doing it in-house than when we were contracting it out. So, so that is increasing our capacity and, and the. Again, the flight program is monitoring that and adjusting the number of students that they accept. To keep that, keep that full and keep people moving through as quickly as they can.
What what number of students do we have in those training program that for pilot?
I think I know, but I'm not sure. So I'll get that and send that to you. So I have an accurate number. Thank you. Unless somebody from flight is out. No, don't see. Okay, I'll get that number for you.
I'm wondering with the questions, and I know last year, I think it was a year, it might even be two, and we took a look at programs with our growth rate. And even when you think about 1100 seats, right? That's about a 10% or a little bit more than 10% growth with what we're doing in growth. I think there's going to be a collision of what that looks like. I think it might be beneficial, and I would look at the board, the potential of what we had before, or that feed to it is what we had available space wise, the program pieces, and those that we were most concerned about of being able to open up what that growth potential is for the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well.
It is, it visually, it helps exactly. That's where I'm kind of trying to cross it.
Okay, we will get that information for you.
Great. Does that make sense, Dr. Rothmer? Great. Any other questions? Yeah, great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue with academic program feasibility, review, and viability report.
Okay, and I'm going to invite Dr. Andrea de Cosmo, the Associate Vice President, Academic Affairs, to come up and deliver that report.
Thank you, Dr. Ailer. Good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Rothmer, Cabinet, and colleagues. It's my pleasure to be here today to present to you our semi annual update on program feasibility and program review and viability. Thank you. So program feasibility is a different process from program review and viability. So the the update today are going to have those those two distinct sections. Thank you, Mike. So program feasibility is the process that we use when ideas for new programs are brought forward. And we start by by running some light cast data and investigating the landscape of the career field in the area. And and we gather information about things like starting salary, median salary, what kind of a degree or certificate might be needed to enter the field, how many jobs are available at the time. And we gather all of that information and share it with the dean and the department chair or the program director of the area that would house that program. And they have conversations and and make a determination based on that data if they're either going to not pursue the program any any further at this time, or if they're going to move forward into a deeper research phase, which is where we look a little bit deeper in terms of space planning and staffing and budgeting and and things like that. Oh, am I really holding this upside down? Thank you, Mike. So that's why that one arrow wasn't working. It was going the wrong way. I kept thinking I'm pressing the right arrow. Thank you. So this list shows us all of the new programs that we have considered since the last semi annual update last April. And so you'll see the status of each one on this table. And you'll notice that four of them were determined to move into that next phase of research. One of them was determined to to not pursue at this time. This next, that works so much better now. This next table shows the programs that were provided to you at the April update that were either in the research or the implementation phase. And they are all now being offered. So we did receive those approvals by the state, approvals by HLC. They're in our catalog, and we are now able to offer those programs. And then this third and final list, these are potential programs that are being placed on hold for now, not because we're forgetting about them or because there were any major concerns. Really, the reason that we're putting them on hold is because these programs are all connected to some larger conversations that we're having about campus planning, space planning, budgeting, some of the things that Dr. Ailer mentioned a minute ago in his report. We're still considering these, but because they're not able to move forward with that normal cadence of moving into research and then implementation as quickly as other programs typically do, we're we're placing them on a brief hold, just so that we can let those broader conversations play out. And we will continue updating you on on those. So let's move into part two, then, program review and viability. And this is the process that Academic Affairs engages in each year. It provides faculty and chairs and program directors in the departments the opportunity to analyze their program's success, to look at relevancy, to review goals, to establish new goals, to look at gaps, opportunities to improve. It's it's an annual process. It starts every August and it wraps up each spring semester. And it starts with the academic departments collecting and reviewing their program data. They use that data and and maybe some other things, too. So they might look at their course schedule. They might look at some programmatic accreditation information. So they gather all their information and they they have conversations in their department with faculty, and they they answer each of the program review questions that were provided that year. And in so, in the process of answering those questions, they're writing what we call a program review narrative. They submit that narrative to the deans and the deans review have continued conversations. Then those narratives move to the academic affairs leadership level for ongoing conversations about support, needed support, needs and goals. And then this past year, Dr. Ailer added some meetings with the departments in the spring semester to have continued conversations about results. We are in this process right now. So we will update you on the on the results of this year's program review in the spring. But did want to share with you a couple of really exciting enhancements to this year's program review process. So last year, you might remember, we had a really big transition. We transitioned from providing departments a PDF of their data over to providing chairs and program directors with access to their data, along with some training, to a data warehouse called Tableau. And they were able to gather the data that they wanted and needed in order to conduct their program review. So this year, we kept that same philosophy of empowering the chairs and the program directors to access the data, to get the data that they need that's relevant for their programs. But we transitioned the platform from Tableau over to Power BI. And that's part of the Campus Lens initiative that Dr. Rothmer has been updating you on, I think, a few meetings ago. Campus Works did an outstanding job providing training. It was a it was an in person live training in August. They they recorded the training and it even separated it out by report so that if if someone wanted information about report number three, they could just go right to that in the video. They don't have to watch the videos for report one and two if they don't want to. There were written instructions that were provided on on how to access and navigate in Power BI, how to filter and and things like that. The chair and program director feedback about that training was very positive. And just had an opportunity to check in the other day with the chairs and the program directors and ask, you know, how how is it going with Power BI and program review? And they had some really great feedback. They said, many of them said it's it's they felt it was an improvement over Tableau, that it's even more user friendly and intuitive than what we had before. Another really great enhancement for this year, Markham is piloting a process with some of our departments that would align program review with determining marketing needs. And I believe Zach McFarlane spoke about this a little bit during his marketing update to you a few meetings ago. But we are very excited about the possibilities here and the opportunity to to partner with Markham. So before I take questions, just want to take a quick minute to thank and appreciate everyone who's involved with both or either either or program feasibility and or program review and viability, which I think is pretty much everyone in academic affairs, plus Campus Works and Markham. Just thank you all for for your dedication, your investment, your leadership, your support in these processes. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I don't have questions. I want to say thank you because that's a lot of work. And it seems that there's, it's not chaotic, that there is definitely a good system. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I would echo. Thank you for your work, knowing the depth and particularly of the information that comes in. I'm pleased you guys are going to Power BI and some of the other more at your fingertip pieces. So it's gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cosmo. Thanks, Dr. Ailer. Very much appreciate it. The next item on the CEO President's Report, it's my pleasure to reintroduce you to Laura Lewis, who's our Director of Institutional Research and Assessment. And she will share the annual core measures report.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I have a few highlights that I'd like to bring your attention to as part of this report. We have currently, in comparison to our previous three years average, we are up just over 10% in overall headcount. Of that, high school concurrent makes up about 45% of the total enrollment, and college level students make up 55%. So we're that that has increased slightly over the previous three year average. Another interesting point on the the access portion of this is that our students who are pursuing associate's degrees now make up 54.6% of total annual headcount, and that's up over 15% over the three year average. So we're seeing an increase in in the number of students who are actually declared for our associate's programs in particular. And I think that's a point worth noting. On the retention side of things, we've been fairly steady. We're right around 50% in our year to year retention. So students who who come in the fall and come back with subsequent fall. I would note that our 2324 cohort had a larger group of students coming in as first time students than we had seen in that previous three year average. So again, we're, part of that is our recovery from the COVID era. But I think that also reflects our ongoing growth, which I think highlights that need to pay attention to our capacity, as Dr. Ailer had been talking about. On the three year completion rate, we are at 36.54%. That is an improvement over our three year average, which included the COVID affected 1920 cohort year, which had a three year completion rate of 29.02. So we are recovering in terms of getting students through programs successfully as well. So those are kind of the highlights. I do also want to point out, this report is built out of our our reporting processes. Previous years had been done on our Tableau reporting tool. This year is the first time we are doing that out of Power BI. And we have had a few minor glitches getting that to work the way that we wanted it to. But it is it is working now, and we're going to continue to make improvements to that process over the coming year. Any questions?
I don't have any questions on your your work. That's amazing what you guys are doing. I'm glad you have BI to help. I do have questions on the learning outcomes. It's I it's critical thinking is 68% currently, and oral communication 51%. And the last three year average critical was 75% in oral, 78. Do we know why?
Honestly, I don't have that.
That's probably not for you.
Yeah, that's that's I would defer to Dr. Ailer and his team on that. So I can't answer that question for you. Any other questions?
We love numbers, people. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Laura. Next, for the CEO President's Report, I'd like to invite Zach McFarlane, our Vice President of Marketing Communications, to talk about the Ames Talking Points and Highlights.
Chair Shock, Dr. Rothmer, members of the board, appreciate the time. This once a month, we look at new talking points, since we have three new ones for you. So I'll just go through these real quick, and then I'll stand for questions. The first one, and Laura, great job. She actually helped us with a few of these talking points, as did Mike Millsap. So we appreciate their help on these, looking at some enrollment data. That first point, enrollments have seen sustained growth over the past two years. Fall '24, 20% increase over the previous year. Fall '25, increased an additional 7%. There's the total number of students, 9,065 enrolled this semester. And again, we're getting close to pre pandemic enrollment numbers. Looking at why affordable tuition rates and a variety of pathways and program offerings. So there's a little bit of why in there for you as well. Economic benefits of an Ames education, some interesting numbers here. According to the most recent economic impact study, the average Ames associate degree graduate sees an annual earnings that are $8,000 higher than a person with a high school diploma. And then over a working lifetime, that equates to about $352,000 in higher earning in earnings per graduate. So just some interesting information on some outcome numbers there, too. This came up in the last meeting. Mike Millsaps was highlighting kind of where the construction project stuff came from. You mentioned you would want to see it. So here you go. We, yeah. So construction projects, source materials made in the USA. And then there's some reasons why that matters, choosing locally made products, critical decision that impacts budget, timeline, community support, etc. And then we did list, Mike did rather, you know, where the materials are being sourced for these current projects. So you can kind of look through that. And then, you know, let the community know as well. Yeah, you bet. So those are your Board of Trustees talking points, October 2025. I'll be back next month. But any question, any questions for these ones?
I just want to say thank you for being so responsive. This is just really powerful information that like for folks to know that it's decreasing timelines, you know, American made, just really, really cool stuff that we can share.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. The last item on the report, if there are any supervisors and team members here with new employees to introduce, please come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stephanie Newton. I am the Chair of Visual and Performing Arts, which is art, music, and theater. And we are welcoming Dr. Ivana Munshin to the team as a full time faculty member. After seven years of being a part time faculty member, she has her doctorate in performance, and she is a brilliant pianist. And we are excited to have her as part of our little aardvark armory.
Good afternoon. I have a little parade. I am Erica, and I'm with the Student Accessibility and Wellbeing Team. And I have the honor of introducing Tegan, our newest full time mental health therapist. If you ever get a chance to talk to her, she has great, great taste in music and tattoos. And then the next person I get to introduce is Meg. She's our new Director of Student Accessibility Services. And she's going to introduce someone else.
Get to be introduced as well as introduced. So good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to be here. I have the honor of introducing Mark Lynch. He is also new to our department. He is our Assistive Technology Specialist. And as tremendous as my vocabulary is, I need a stronger word for specialist because he is instrumental in supporting our department and our students as well. He's He's spent a lot of time in a room with me while we're doing intakes at different campus sites and I have learned so much from him. So thank you, Mark.
Mark was also one of our recent Student Affairs Pillars of Excellence nominees. So very exciting. I'm here to introduce Caitlin Cox. Caitlin is our new Director of Transition Programs, which includes lots of things. The advising arm of High School to Ames, the Ames to UNC program, Reischer Bridge Scholars and Transfer Services. Caitlin came most recently from CSU. And before that was at Laramie County Community College. She brings a lot of experience with her. And she has been instrumental since June in helping the ongoing development of our new Ames Case Management Advising Model, as well as the partnership with Campus Works in developing the new Campus Lens tools. Welcome, Caitlin.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jodi Kugler with the Case Management Department here at Ames. And I'm happy to introduce, and we're so excited to have a new bilingual case manager, Hizera Ramirez, who brings a lot of experience and expertise in inclusion, working with students, was an academic advisor before, and I, we're just super excited and very lucky to have her.
Hi, I'm Becca Urbex Herman. I'm in the Student Life Office. I have my stuff written down here because Dakota's amazing. This is Dakota Woolner. She's our new graphic design and media specialist. She came to Ames six months ago. The delay in this timing is my bad, not hers. But she brings experience from roles that balance creativity with customer-focused strategy. So before she was at Ames, she designed graphics for the IKEA location down in Centennial and Independent Films. She studied graphic design at Rocky Mountain College of Arts and Design. And she has brought her passion for visual storytelling, branding and social media engagement and mentoring others in that creativity to Ames. She's completely revolutionized Student Affairs. If you don't have Instagram, now's the time to follow amcc underscore student life. It's incredible what she's done. And we're so grateful to have her here and thrilled that you get to see the face and name behind the marketing that you see all over campus from Student Life.
Certainly thank you to all the supervisors for those introductions and welcome to the new team members and Chair Shock, members of the board. That concludes the President's CEO Report.
Thank you, Dr. Rothmer. Wow, with all the superstars, I am like getting more excited. Looks like great teams. Thank you. It's great to meet all of you. We're reaching the end of the meeting and we always take a moment for self-assessment because we do value our accountability. Do any of the trustees have comments, takeaways or things that could be improved?
I just have one comment that I just want to say it's incredible to see all the new people. And gee, I just want to tell you that Gee was my niece's academic advisor at UNC and she misses you terribly. So y'all got a rock star here.
Thank you. Any other comments?
It was just another meeting with amazing preparation and delivery of the information. It's a lot of information, but it's so well-prepared. Even I can understand it.
You just cut yourself short, but we know your brilliance, Jane. Anything else?
Just wanted to say it sounds like the BI program. Power BI is just working wonders. So we can't wait to see what else it does. So thank you, everyone, for sharing.
Very good. If there is no other comments, I would second all of the comments of, I think, another great meeting and Dr. Rothmer, thank you for being here with our CEO report. And I don't have anything else. So if there's nothing else from the board, I'd entertain a motion to approve, to adjourn.
So adjourn the meeting.
Got it.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. Meeting adjourned.